Good afternoon. Thank you for attending the Pasco School Board of Directors Study Session this afternoon. We're going to continue our discussions on board governance policies. We do this work sometimes in board retreats, which are open public meetings, and Ms. Whitney is going to go through a section of "Good Governance as a Choice," and this study session will be broadcast on PSC Channel 191 and also the school district's YouTube. Thank you.
So, good evening, Board President Lerman and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to continue to work through operationalizing our board governance model, which is focused on coherent governance based on the book "Good Governance as a Choice." Tonight's presentation will have two purposes. The first is to revisit the definition of our owners and clients, and the second is to present a series of policies around what the model defines as the board's CEO policies. And this will be an opportunity for you to hear those policies and for consideration of those, and then also discussion. Just for clarification, when the model is talking about board CEO, CEO is referring to the superintendent. So, the first part of our presentation is around the owner-client conversation. So, "Good Governance as a Choice" points out that regardless of the type of board that people are participating on, whoever a board is, is accountable to the ownership. Boards act on proxy of the broader ownership because in a lot of circumstances, it's not feasible for the entire board to, or the entire ownership of an organization to kind of quote-unquote "sit at the table." So, ownerships of boards either vote or acknowledge a small group of people that are to represent the larger ownership's interest in leading and guiding the organization. So, the process of coherent governance starts with a clear understanding of who the owners of an organization are and who the clients are. And for school districts, the model suggests that the public at large owns the school district, and the direct client group is typically composed of children of a percentage of that particular ownership. So, through a collaborative process in the summer of 2015, the board identified the owners of our district as the community and the clients as the student. So, the model allows, like I said, identification of what we would call "direct clients," and then also identify or identification of what we would call "indirect clients." So, should the board be interested in layers of clarification, we could add that to our model. At this point, the board has identified the ownership as the community and our clients as the students. So, in our model, the direct client would be the student. So, at this point, if there's anyone who'd like to have some discussion or clarification around that, now would be a great time to bring that to the table.
So, I think we've had in previous discussions, we've talked about our clients, like Ms. Whitney said, as students, but I think I've also heard us talk about our clients as being the students' families. And I wanted to discuss this again just because I know that, like Ms. Whitney said, these students are our direct clients, but we're also often dealing with parents that send requests to either the board or the district, and it's our job to serve them. So, we thought it might be good to talk about them as our indirect clients.
I agree. I agree with that statement. I think that students are clients, but I think, I think when you talk about a student, it's about a family. So, it's definitely an indirect client.
Yeah, I think it's interesting. One of the things to me on this, as the board, you know, we represent this ownership, the community. So, my thought in this model is, you know, do we know what they, our community wants? Are we representing them well? How are we getting that feedback? And how are we learning what our community wants? Are we representing them well in this, in this setup? And I agree, the students are clearly the direct clients, so there are a lot of people that support them, whether it be their parents, families, the teachers, other people that support them. And that's fine to clarify with me as well.
Do you feel like by saying "students," we are already including the families because, you know, students don't have any legal rights. They don't have, you know, it's, they are integrally a part of a family. Even, even with the foster children that we've had, we aren't their parents, but they are integrally a part of our family. And so, when you're serving a student, you're serving the family. So, is that how you're feeling with this? Because we don't, if you feel like it's already, I'd like to hear your thoughts on that.
In researching the request to bring this back to the, to the board and have the conversation, I did some Google searching of other districts who are using this particular model, and you see it representative of a variety of ways. So, I think it's really about what do we feel like would be clearest to our, our owners and our clients, you know, and especially to be able to pick up. My goal would be for this, once finalized, to be on our website. So, you know, something that's pretty clear to people when you pick it up, what we're trying to communicate. So, in the Google searching that I've done of other districts that are using the model, it's done both, I mean, it's done really both ways. Some districts add a layer of clarification, some don't. And so, I think it's just about clarity when we, when we make it public for, for our community so that it stands alone and doesn't need a lot of explanation.
Do you care one way or another? Would you rather it just be about students, or could we include students and families?
I don't have a strong preference or a recommendation. Either way, it's really around this particular item, what the board feels is clearest for, for the community.
I feel like the family is the core organization to our community, to the world, to, to the universe. So, I feel like, I feel like families is where we should put it, but that's my, my personal view.
I like, I like something that the book says on page number, page 29. It says, "A board," usually the board is at the board table because the ownership itself is not, it, the ownership has empowered a small group of people to act on its behalf in leading and guiding the organization. So, I think that ties into what Dr. Richardson said is, "We're here to represent the entire ownership, the entire community, but we're here to serve the students, and we're here to indirectly serve their families."
So, I don't want to digress too far off of the two purposes I requested to be a focus of this particular study session, but just because it has come up a couple times, Dr. Richardson's point around, the, the model very clearly talks about a board is a representative of the community in, by proxy, right? So, and the expectation that we are hearing from our constituency, and, you know, your question around, "What does that look like? How are we doing that? Are we, are we getting to everyone?" etc. The model doesn't call for it or doesn't specify. I think what might be an interesting thing for you to consider or for us to consider is, once we get kind of the core components of the governance framework together, considering creating a set of what I would call owner-client policies that would be, these are the things as a district that we do or we believe in in terms of interfacing with our community. So, like, for example, last year, we did four community forums. You know, that could be specified in our owner, owner-client policies. You know, this is the way that we, as a board, go out into the community and seek feedback. You know, I mean, it could be a variety of different things. So, we could be very public around, "These are the strategies as a board that you use to get feedback and to gain insight from the ownership." I think it would be an interesting thing to think about as we move forward.
So, I think, I think I heard that we will change it to have our direct clients as students and our indirect clients as their families.
Okay. Thank you. So, the second part of tonight's work is to begin a conversation around the board-CEO relationship policies. And the purpose of these policies is outlined here. The goal is to define roles in a way that both the board and the CEO play a complementary but separate role in operation of the organization. So, the broad categories that I'm presenting are those that are suggested by the model. And in bringing these recommendations forward, again, it's a result of what the model suggests, but also a reflection of other districts that, the language that they are using around their board-CEO relationship policies. So, the first broad category is around a single point of direction. So, the board, by listening to the owners of the district, articulates direction through results policies and operational expectations. So, tonight during the board meeting, I will be going over our operational expectations and providing some examples of how those operational expectations have impacted the way that we, as district staff, have done the work. And then, at our next board meeting, I'll be finalizing some results policies with you during the board meeting as well. So, as a board, you have listened to the ownership and have articulated through operational policies, the what of the district, and the results policies, which are the outcomes that you would expect to see from the organization, and gives district staff those kind of big, long-range, kind of outrageous outcomes or gaudy goals for us to reach. So, then, based on those two foundational sets of direction from the board, the CEO directs the work of the organization in a way that aligns with that direction, and so by proxy, then, aligning with the values of the community. So, that's what this particular single point of direction policy speaks to. The next set is what are called unity of control, and this really encompasses the idea that the board governance, or it governs as a group, which eliminates any one individual from making a decision without the rest of the board or providing individual work requests. It's really about that unity. As a, as a, as a unified group, you, you have control of the district. So, this is the sets of policies that speak to that, from the way that voting is done to the way that, as a superintendent, where I get direction and how that happens, and the expectation that you have of me as a board regarding work requests or information requests. The staff accountability relationship policies. This section clarifies the role of the board and the CEO in giving direction to staff, evaluation of staff, hiring, disciplining or dismissing of an employee. So, basically, except where defined, required by law or collecting a bargaining agreement, the hiring, direction, evaluation, hiring, and disciplining and dismissing of staff is, is a responsibility of the CEO. The next piece of this is the authority of the superintendent, and this addresses the board's responsibility for providing the CEO direction. So, again, the what of the district. And then, you, you provide that direction to me through the operational expectations and the results policies, and then it's my responsibility to make day-to-day operational decisions that align and support that direction. So, those are the key components to the superintendent or the board-CEO policies. It's a, there's a lot of text on those slides, so certainly this is an opportunity for me to provide that information to you for consideration. This is not a decision-making in any means. This is a dialogue, and then we can talk about, you know, the best format to bring those back to you, whether it be a report or as an action item for the board's approval at a later date. So, any discussion that we'd like to have or clarification around those would be excellent.
The fifth one was monitoring CEO performance, and the fourth was delegation of authority. Did you combine those two in that last slide?
So, Amy, you bring up a great point. This, so in the book, this is split into two parts. This is part one of the CEO-board relationship policies. Part two is around the monitoring of the CEO's performance. I would be looking at bringing back a recommendation around the monitoring of the CEO's performance at a, at another board meeting.
But it wouldn't go under the same policy?
It would. I just was tackling them separately because it got, there's a lot of information here, and I didn't want to overwhelm the presentation.
So, we're tackling the first four?
Correct.
This one will be tackled?
Yes. Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
This might, I mean, it kind of ties in. We talked indirectly about either having one person work with Ms. Whitney on revamping the monitoring, the superintendent evaluation, basically, or we could appoint a subcommittee if you guys would, would rather do that. It's, it might be a good time to talk about that. It ties into this, so.
Yeah, that'd be great. And this, yeah, this is hard. I've done a great deal of research. I've been to all of these different things on, on evaluations. I have researched five different superintendent evaluations that the state was under, you know, that they were just trying out throughout the state of Washington. And we tried to try one out on Superintendent Hill, but it was largely unsuccessful. They are so complex in their nature. So, I've, you know, I've talked to another board that, friend, and anyway, and she said that she could get like that rough draft, but that's just another board. I don't even know where to go. Do you know where to go, how to make this more simple, and yet? I do, actually.
Good.
And if you're- I have some great ideas.
Fantastic.
And like President Lerman said, I think if we could do a subcommittee that could, I can pull together, and I've already started pulling together some resources, and I think it's going to be kind of connecting some dots between the board governance model that you, as a board, have identified as being a priority for us, really sets a philosophy for how that's done. And then, I think there's some pieces that we can connect that would make a really, what I think from someone who would be evaluated by it, a very meaningful evaluation that also aligns with moving the initiatives forward that you, as a board, have told me that are important to you and, by proxy, the community. So, I have, you know, I have some, what I think are great ideas about how to do that. So, you know, a committee to help suss that out would be great.
And it'll help a lot. I think the, the results policies that Ms. Whitney alluded to, we all know what that is. It's the goal setting that we've been working on, the, the high-level goals. There's a lot of work that's went into that, and eventually, we're going to, in the near future, roll that out to everybody else. I believe it's been rolled out to some of the district leadership team, but I think that'll roll right into the evaluation nicely also.
You know, I think that's a phenomenal point, is we do have some pieces in place now that are different than what we had in place before. So, some mechanisms for, so for example, we have a mechanism for monitoring, like the Deputy Successor Transition Plan that was very public. You know, we have the results policies. And so, I think we have some mechanisms in place that if we connect the dots using our board governance model framework and then some other pieces to help kind of monitor that, I think we could put something together that would be very, very innovative.
The one thing too is, I, I would personally urge you, when you do take this, this on, that you think about not just you and how we are going to evaluate you, but how limited in the past and how, that we have been able to effectively make changes within a superintendency when things weren't going right. And, and, and there's a lot of things that were going right, and there's a lot of things that weren't going right. And it needs to be within the board's power to help change some of those things. And because, because no one is going to be perfect, and, and we all, anyway. And so, so when, when we do, I know we're getting off track here, but when we do get into that evaluation, that's where I really want to take things that, no matter if it's you or the next superintendent, that we can help them develop to be an incredible CEO of this organization by, by results, by, by pushing things like that and seeing, with clear expectations and, and results that happen. And when they don't happen, then there's, okay, this is messed up. Let's fix it, and let's get on, and let's, let's change some things. So, I'm sure you probably already have that in mind, but I would love for you to keep that in mind. This isn't for you. It's for our district.
Right.
For the future.
Yep. Yeah, I think we can strike a nice balance between a systems evaluation and a individual superintendent characteristic evaluation. I think we can strike a nice balance there.
And let me correct, that isn't just for you. It is for you, also for our future.
That's right.
Thank you.
I think the exciting part about, we started going through this policy and talking about how we wanted to govern as a board a year, maybe a little over a year ago. And it's been a lot of work, and Ms. Whitney's done a lot of work. Her team's done a lot of work, and I know we've had retreats and done a lot of work, but in the end, I think it's going to, for Ms. Whitney, make her job a lot easier in communicating our, the board's vision to her. And instead of having her chase, chasing circles with people giving her different directions, it's going to make these communications and the vision a lot more clear. So, thank you to you and your team for all the work, and also to the board.
It's been my absolute pleasure. So, Amy, are you volunteering to help me with the evaluation?
I would love to. This has been something I've wanted from the day I got on the board. So, I, I just think it's key in, in making our district the best that it can possibly be. And, and it's, it's what good organizations do all across the United States. So, yes, I would love to be a part of that. Thank you.
Is there anybody else on the board who would like to serve on a subcommittee with Ms. Phillips? Or would you, or would we, as a board, prefer to let Ms. Phillips and, and Ms. Whitney work through it and come to us with a recommendation, and then we can make our recommendations from there?
I would be happy to help, but whatever we need to do. I think it's important that we have a, some kind of an evaluation. Personally, I think it needs to be results-based. So, I think that's critical. That's, that would be the major component I would expect, but not sure exactly what you have in mind, but I'd be happy to help out.
Thank you.
So, maybe, maybe at the next meeting, we'll take action, form a subcommittee, and we won't have to have Ms. Phillips and Mr. Christensen at, at every meeting with you when you guys work through it, but we'll, we'll make that official.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, Michelle, Ms., maybe I said that wrong.
Ms. Whitney.
Mrs. Whitney, sorry. Anyway, that's where, I'm not good at this, is the whole protocol thing. So, I apologize.
No, no apologies.
So, I notice we have a half an hour left. Do we have something completely planned, or can I ask a few questions about some of these previous policies?
I would like you to ask questions about these previous policies.
Okay. One of them was, you know, oh, shoot, my page flipped. I'm like, that's not what one of them was. It's on page 39. The CEO only links between the board and the, and the operational organization. I think this is key. I think that we should only be directing you and not anyone else, but it us, and then to govern as a group. I think, just like sometimes you make mistakes, we make mistakes. And so, I would love when it said, "You know what? This is a staffing thing. This is our, this is our domain. You know, this, we didn't ask for whatever." I would love for you to make sure that that's very clear, so that when we do cross that line, because we will, not because we are trying to cross the line, but because we just are concerned. And, and so, I want to make sure that that, that happens, that we, that we correct that. I know I have inadvertently, and I want to know when, when that happens. We, but at the same time, there's, I'm hoping, I don't know, anyway, I want to make sure that we only provide direction. One of my favorite things to do has been to interview principals, to interview teachers at times. Extremely helpful to me to get to know how they are doing, how they're feeling. I, that is informative. I'm assuming that has nothing to do with, you know, the other things too, is sometimes it's like, "Oh, why don't you talk to this person that's overspent, or this person that's over the budget about this?" And so, I want to know how you feel. Do you want us, if I call up and say, you know, "Randy, can you let me know about X, Y, and Z?" Are you okay with that? Or do you want us to say, "Michelle, I'm going to ask Randy about this. How do you want us to work?" Things like that, when we are just trying to gather information and be more educated.
Typically, members just let me know that, "Hey, I'm reaching out to Randy," or "I need to call." Or sometimes what happens is I get an email that says, "Hey, I have these questions. Who would be the best person to talk to?" That just helps me know what questions there are, and I can direct you to the right people. This governance model would never, in my mind, replace you going out and directly visiting with principals. Principals love that. Teachers love to see you in their classrooms, in their schools. And the information that you get from those interviews, I think, does help provide a perspective for you as board members. So, absolutely, we would never want to eliminate that or for you to feel like you couldn't do that. Going out and having those conversations is different than going and directing a principal about the way that they would perform a PLC, for example. Going and asking questions about that, yeah, go out, you know, they love to show off their schools and what they're doing. There's nothing like seeing innovation and action. So, certainly, we would encourage you to continue to do that. And then, any insight that you get from that, we, you, and if you felt like we needed to change or add operational expectations to address a certain area that you felt like was going particularly well, that you would want to see consistently across the whole district, we could add operational expectations. Or if there's an area of concern that you feel like we need to focus on, we could add operational expectations about that. Or if it's more informal and just like an awareness or a question, you know, certainly, we would address those.
Yeah, Amy, I think that's good to delineate the difference between asking for information and giving direction. I think we should, as a board, we want to funnel most of our questions through Ms. Whitney, but we also don't want to make it so that we can't directly talk. If we want to talk to Mr. Nunnamaker and ask him for information, we can ask him for information and say, you know, if, as long as that doesn't get in the way of your work, and Ms. Whitney, you know, approves that. But it's good to have the direct conversation sometimes also, so that, so that what we're asking for is not lost in translation.
And so, we don't take two hours of the board meetings?
Yeah.
Oftentimes, we hear that from, from that pulpit. Please come, let me know. I'm assuming when that happens that we are free to, okay, without even letting, you still want us to let you know, "Hey, I'm seeing so-and-so." I think you guys kind of typically do, or they let me know. I haven't had an issue with it, Amy, so whatever we're currently doing, I don't have a problem with.
Great. That's what I wanted to know. By the way, these are great, I think, every one of them. So, I'm fully on board with this. I think it's a really good thing, and I think it's exactly how we should run. So, I think it's great. It's nice to have some clarification around each of the points, though.
Yeah, I agree. I think this, the differentiation of this, these policies and this idea is in providing direction, not in meeting with people and gathering information and becoming familiar with what's, you know, what our students are going through, meeting with teachers, meeting with principals. I mean, we can't possibly expect Ms. Whitney to represent all of those things to us, each of us, all the time, nor would it be recommended. So, certainly, that's what I feel we should all be doing, to be, become more familiar with what's happening in our schools and throughout the district. The difference is giving direction. No one of us should be going and meeting with the principal and saying, you know, "Hey, we really think you should be doing this," and that, that's the whole point. So, I would much rather us err on being out among teachers and principals and parents and administrators and getting to know them, getting to know what's happening. I think that's, we should be erring on that side and not so much on that, don't want to talk to anyone for fear of, or risk of providing direction, and just be careful what we say with them.
So, we've, we've set goals, and we've crafted results policies, like in chapter seven of this book. I don't know if we want to have any conversation of where we're going next in our process. There's, there's monitoring eventually. Maybe there's some, I haven't seen it in here, but marketing of what we're doing. And let's talk about where we're going next.
So, tonight during the board meeting, I'll talk about operational expectations and give an example of an operational expectation around instructional program and how that has influenced the way the district has launched the instructional materials. Those operational expectations that we've done, I believe we've tackled four out of the recommended 12 or so. So, those other broad categories all need to continue to interface with you either through- interface with you either through study sessions, retreats, or board reports, to continue to get direction around the other broad categories like, there's a budget planning, asset preservation, emergency superintendent succession plan, global operating expectations, things like that, so I'll need to continue to interface with you on those. We, then, the following board meeting after that, I'll bring the results policies to you as a board and, and provide a context for why we have those, and highlight what they are, the goals that you as a board have identified, and you're right, Mr. Lerman, I have explored those with our principals already. After I bring those to you, I believe in September, we'll be launching, or all be launching, a stakeholder work group, and I'll talk about this more during the board report in September, but the, the, the role of that stakeholder work group will be to take the existing strategic plan that was created and approved, what is it, was it in June of fifteen? Anyways, sixteen? Anyway, with the prior strategic plan, the community generated a, a menu, like a huge menu of what they saw as key actions at the time, so we'll take that information, the board's results policies, those hundred percent goals that we've, we've, that you've developed, and the system structures that we already have in place to meet those goals, and things that our principals feel like we need to put in place. So the stakeholder work group's job is going to be to look at all of that information and kind of realign some key actions for us moving forward, so that the strategic, the strategic plan is a living document and should shift and change based on the priorities of a system, and we developed that a year ago, a year and a half ago, probably almost two years ago that process started. Well, we would expect a system of this size and this level of complexity to change in two years, so we need to realign the work to shift to where we are now, so that will be a process that would be initiated after the September board meeting, so in September or probably October, that stakeholder work group would be identified, and, and we would start that work, and then my goal would be to maintain that stakeholder work group over time, if people wanted to continue to be involved in helping monitor the strategic plan, et cetera. So that is the results policies. There's also a set of policy called board governance policies. We started those policies in, in the summer of 2015. Superintendent Hill did some drafting around those policies. Those need to be brought back to you for consideration, which would happen either during a study session or a board meeting. So those are the, the big pieces around our board governance model that we need to bring full circle. In the completion of those things, which could be relatively quickly, like I'm anticipating us being able to pull all that together by the end of January, our board governance model, in draft at least, would be finalized, knowing that the operational expectations will, will change based on the complexity of the system and the needs of the system. So I'm anticipating having a full governance model in place by the end of January, including a stakeholder group that's gonna do some work around realigning our strategic plan to the results policies. So some pretty nice system structures that we'll have in place by Janu, into January.
So right now, the strategic plan is set to go from 2016 to 2019, at least, that's what it says, so, and it, but it was, it was approved in 2015. So this is just a step, we will still redo it after 2019?
Well, I would, I would recommend that, that, that the, and it might not be a huge process every year, but at least yearly, you're engaging a community group around, hey, is this still meeting our needs? Are we still doing, you know, like, let's talk about where we're at, doing that yearly, but you're right, Amy, in 2019, it expires in 2019, so we would need to be ready to either recommit to the work that's defined in that plan, or like, start a whole new process over, but I think we would need to make those decisions closer to the expiration of the plan. My hunch is that this plan is robust enough that we may be able to use the foundation of it to continue the work forward, but certainly, we would wanna suspend that decision-making until we got closer to 2019.
Okay. So I was just wondering if we were gonna push it out a year?
Okay. Well, and then the piece that I left out, you know, Amy and Steve and I, we will work on the monitoring of the strati, or the superintendent, basically the superintendent evaluation piece, and for sure have that all finalized in time for you to launch that process, which happens, I believe, in January. So we'll prioritize that, to have that in place for you for this evaluation cycle.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think with those other things, you know, just 'cause the strategic, the strategic plan says 2016 to 2019, we need to be flexible, right, and be able to adapt, just like with curriculum or anything else we're doing. If what's been decided in the past, or what we've decided, isn't working based on the results that we're seeking, then we need to adjust it and
That's right.
and gather the feedback and change course. We shouldn't feel locked in because on the paper it says
That's right.
through, through 2019 should be ongoing.
I agree. And we may find that, you know, if the five goals that we've identified are not the right goals, we may need to modify, and I think your point is very well taken, that, you know, this is a flexible and fluid system, and, and we need to be responsive to the needs of, of the people that we're here to serve.
So I think we, we got some time left. What we might be able to do is in chapter two, we've gone over this before, but there's twelve different attributes or things for a high, what does a high-performing board look like? We might run through those and talk, talk about them and, to help us with our planning, but the first one, I think that would be good to talk about, is we've talked about it in the past, high-performing boards plan their own work, and we've talked about having, we, we have retreats right now, but we've talked about having some kind of annual board planning session, or multiple board planning sessions. I've asked Ms. Whitney to create, and she's, she's done it, a, a board calendar for us that, that'll be under our board access, that is kind of a one-stop shop for when we have actions like creating a superintendent devaluation, or, or any actions that we need to take, boards of distinction applications, anything we wanna do so that we know where to look for what we need to do there, but in populating that calendar, I wanted to ask you guys if you wanna have a retreat sometime to work through a board planning session, or you want to write up your ideas and send it to Mr. Christensen and I, and we'll work through it during agenda setting, how you guys would, what the thoughts are on how we would go about doing that work?
Yeah, I think we, at the, one of our, our agenda, our board retreats, we suggested making a calendar, making it very clear on what we're going to do, and, and we did set a few things that we wanted on that calendar, isn't that correct? So, um, so I think it would probably be really important that we do that every year, so that as we make that new calendar, that it's very clear that we want certain workshops on certain things, and, and follow-ups on these results, and, and the things that are going to get us to the results, so I think it would be key that once a year, we do a retreat that helps populate that calendar, similar to what we did in, I, I believe it was December. I don't know, maybe it was later retreat that we did that at, but I think, that's my opinion.
Seems like some of these things we could maybe combine in, in the retreats, you know, and we had a lot, I've been on the board for ten months, I don't know, it seems like we've had a lot of retreats. The calendaring that we, I remember talking about this at one of the retreats, from what I remember, would like to see is just kind of a, a one-year, the school year, what kind of the general outline is for the board meetings, there are certain reports that we get each year, like the budget, we know we have to have this report, you know, Howard's gonna, Mr. Roberts is gonna give this report on these days, so we just kinda know, in general, we can look at the, the year and just know what to expect, not even necessarily all the details, 'cause things change and are fluid, but just kind of the basic outline of the year I can look, and second and fourth Tuesday in March, we have this budget discussion, and this, that's what it would be most helpful for me, just in preparing and knowing what, what we're gonna discuss, and it'd probably be helpful for administrators too, that are preparing reports, that we kinda just know what, what's gonna be upcoming, you know, so I think some of the board retreats we've had in the last year, we could probably combine and do similar type things, and not have to meet so much extra, which is challenging for us to get together on a separate day.
So Ms. Whitney can populate the calendars with reports that we're required to have by law, or that the district believes the board should be aware of, but this would be more of a retreat to populate our work, and what, what we focus on, or what we want reports on, based on what you've been hearing from the community, or based on what you believe is important for student success, to get additional information, and to provide that additional information to the public. So it's, it's kind of the stuff that, at least in the near, near past, we've, it's been relegated to the, to the agenda-setting meetings with the president and the vice president, but this is getting the whole board in one room for a couple hours to plan the work for the year, instead of piecemealing it together, like, oh, I heard something from community member, why can we get that on the agenda in the next month, or the next month and a half, and then we're going, well, we're booked for, you know, two months, so kind of a, just an overall planning session. It could be combined with something else, but that, that'd be the idea behind it.
Yeah, or a study session, you know, we're all here, this is the time we're here, it could be a study session that we have once a year.
Could be a study session. Could be a study session.
Where no one has to give a presentation, we, we just do have that discussion as part of a study session.
I think it's critical, to me, it makes sense that we do it approximately this time, rather than in December, when everything's laid out largely, but at the same time, we evaluate superintendent in January, so laying out those things so that we are making progress, I, I don't know, what's your feeling on whether to do it in December?
It can be, it can be twice a year. I mean, if we wanna do a study session or a retreat, and leave it up to the board here, but a couple hours, set it around in the fall, and we can look at it again when, after the new year, maybe, reevaluate and see if there's anything else people want to add to it.
Yeah, I think, you know, the natural separation or time is in the summer, and things are slower anyways, as far as reports from administrators, and how things are going in school, obviously, school's not in session, so to me, the natural time is in the summer to kind of have one of our study sessions, or board retreat, whatever you wanna do, related to that topic for the upcoming year, and then we kinda plan that out.
But I do think it's key. I think the whole board should be on board with what we set as study sessions, and I think that they should much, be much more strongly correlated to our results, and our results-based, and that's what we need to see more on the agendas, and we need to see that more in our study sessions, but, you know, I, I appreciated Ms. Whitney on, on what she has already done toward, toward that goal, and to getting us there, and I'm, I'm hoping that things will even go further there, and, and following years, as, as the, our culture in this, in this district begins to change more and more, to more results-oriented.
So Ms. Whitney and I and Mr. Christensen will look at the, the schedule at the next agenda setting next week, and figure out if it makes sense to put it in as a study session, and if everything's packed, we'll put it in as a retreat, but otherwise, we'll try, we'll attempt to put it in on a four-thirty study session, and make multiple attempts at it if we need more time.
Well, maybe we could even have a half hour earlier, have a four o'clock study session, and that way.
Right. Does that work for everyone?
That might be easier, 'cause it's hard.
That would be great.
In the past, it's been hard for us to establish a time for all five of us.
That would be.
We, we will look at that too, and figure out what makes the most sense.
Will we do another one in December, then?
We, we probably can, we don't need to, maybe, we'll, we'll look at that, and we can talk about it at the first one, and figure out if we wanna schedule it, or, or see how it goes.
Is there a place to put this really clear on our board page, where we see calendar, where things are coming up, so, so as a board member, when I'm like, man, we haven't heard about this, when are we gonna hear about it? I can go back and see that on our board page. Can we do that?
Absolutely.
That's the plan.
Okay. The other thing is, I, I need to, Mark's not in the room, I don't think, but I was thinking about using some of our new-fangled Waffle technology, like the Office 360, you can share a folder that you, it would just be like going, anyway, so we can talk about, yes, we can absolutely do that, and there might be some other swanky technology we can use.
See, I know you've already given us, me, well, I think you've given all of us, a date, and I'm gonna cover this, and this, and this, on this month, this month, this month. I'm sure it's buried in my email somewhere, so that's why I would love
It's no problem.
to see that, to see that directly.
Yep, no problem. We, uh, we have a template that we use as district staff to kind of plan out the year, and the board gave very clear direction to me at the end of last year, or the summer, around focusing on results, at at least one boarding meeting a month, or at least gave me the flexibility to start with one boarding meeting a month, so we've already calendared those in, so we've started that process, so it would not be challenging at all to, to bring that forward as a, as a template and create a work plan.
And the board, like, the board packets, we see them before, I think it's, but just the board that sees those board packets before, I think the agenda's made public, but the board packet itself is for the board, so this might be something that would be for the board, because it would be changing, I'd imagine that we'd be, and so I don't know if we'd want to make that public, it would just be nice if it was accessible on the website to, for us. And also, I assume everything is going forth with the, with the, oh, the phone thing that's coming out on the eighteenth, the app?
Yep, we're appy, we say. We talked to the principals about it, the principals are super excited, we met with principals last week for three and a half days, so that's moving forward, and we're really excited about what that's gonna offer our.
And everything's on schedule for the eighteenth?
I have not heard that it's not.
Okay.
So my understanding is that it, it's still on schedule.
Okay, great.
So in the, in the next ten, fifteen minutes here, maybe, let's go back to page nine, and just go through as many of these as we can, and then people can talk about if they believe that, if they wanna plan work to improve any of these high-performing board recommendations, or if we believe that we've been doing the work to improve there. The first one on page nine there is, high-performing boards know what their job is. Ms. Whitney's talked to me in the last couple weeks, we went through this maybe a year, year and a half ago, about our, our job description, and I think she, you believe that there's room to make it more brief and concise there. We can do that as a board, or we can have her, I think it, it might make sense for her to go through our old policies, and, and in places where we have redundancies, make them more concise, and bring them back to us as recommendation, if, if the board's okay with that.
He's okay with that?
Okay, so, that takes care of that one. Number two is, high-performing boards function at the level of policy. As we talked about right here, we've been doing a lot of work in that area, I don't know if there's any additional discussion on that one. High-performing boards create their own governing culture, also operational expectations, and the results policies we're looking at, we've been doing a lot of work there. High-performing boards follow the rules, probably not much discussion there. High-performing boards plan their own work, which is what we just discussed. High-performing boards have a long-term vision. I think the results policies and the goals we've set, you know, along with the revamped strategic plan that we're working on, do a lot in that regard. Is there any additional discussion on that topic? Next, high-performing boards focus on outcomes. Again, I think we're all really excited about the, the results policies, and we're really excited to share that with the public in the near future. We, we just discussed this one tonight, high-performing boards understand the separation of responsibility between the board and the superintendent. So here's one, members of the high-performing boards deal consistently and fairly with each other, and with their CEO, and I would, I would add, with their staff, with their owners, with their clients, and I think we put that into our operational policies, that we wanna see, you know, consistency throughout all programs, and throughout the implementation of all programs, and I think we're starting to see that. We're gonna continue to work on improving that for the public, for the clients, for the owners, and I think we as a board, I know we as a board appreciate the work Ms. Whitney and her team's doing in that area.
You know, I would like to kinda, I don't know, maybe this goes with nine, maybe it goes with ten, because they operate efficiently, but we did a board self-evaluation on the whole entire board, and we briefly discussed it, I think it might be another great study session, or a great thing to put in one of our, in one of our board agendas, that's going over that, and, and talking as a board, where the weaknesses are, where the strengths are, so, because we do these self-evaluations... So because we do these self-evaluations and there are clear areas of strengths and weaknesses, it would be great to talk about how we can overcome some of these strengths and weaknesses as a board. So, and we haven't done that, we've done, I don't know, maybe we have, I don't feel like we've done that though, where we've taken that evaluation, actually used it. We also had one where we evaluated each individual and ourselves and that was put on a spectrum. I would, that's completely done, it's ready for us all to do. I would love to do that and that's not one we would discuss, it's one we use privately to, so that we can realize, oh, this is how I'm being perceived, I would love to change that, you know? And, and so that we personally know what we can do personally to change or how the rest of the board and ourselves view each other. So I would love to, to finish off that one. There was a great deal of work on the staff that went into creating that and I think it's a powerful document. But I think, I think that that would help us to operate more efficiently if we don't just tackle the district's shortcomings, but also our own.
I, I wrote that down, we'll discuss that at the next agenda setting also, how to fit, fit a discussion on self-evaluation back into possibly a study session. And it says, uh, high performing boards operate efficiently. I think that like many of these other ones here, these policies and expectations we're working on are going to help us there. High performing boards never embarrass themselves or the organization. High performing boards are in touch with their owners. So we've been, we've been working on that, becoming more in touch with the community. We've had community forums, uh, these policies and, and operating in a more consistent manner, I think, uh, help our relationships with the owners. Any other discussions on any, anything the board would like to do to further connect with, uh, with the owners or the community?
I love this last paragraph. It says, "Most boards don't do a very good job of meeting this expectation. They purposely plan and connect with the owners only when they, when something is needed in return, but not at any other time." And, um, I think that's true. I think we often connect when, when we do need something, but I also feel like this board has made a great deal of progress in connecting with our, with our owners, um, with various other things. I mean, I think this, this, um, new app is really going to help things and our better communications online and our communications reviews. And, um, and I think we're making progress, but I don't think we're there and I think we all realize that and I think we're getting there. So I think that's something that we're doing a great job in getting rolling and getting going.
That's interesting. The first, uh, the first, um, the high performing boards know what their job is at first and the last one seemed to tie together to me, knowing what our job is, our role, setting the vision. And then the last point that they make of, um, that Amy just discussed, being in touch with our owners, to me, those tie together. It's the beginning and the end, you know, as, as a board, to me, the, our responsibility is to represent the community in setting the vision and direction for our school board and ensure that, uh, our public school system in our community is doing a great job at education, educating our children. Uh, and so to know how that's going and to be in touch with our owners, uh, those are the two key things in my mind as, as far as our role is to make sure that we're, that that's going well. Uh, I think Ms. Whitney mentioned the community forums, I think that's a great way to evaluate how we're doing, how, not just how we feel each other are doing, but how does the whole community feel? How, how do the teachers feel we're doing? What, what can be improved? To me, there's natural points that that can be done. I'm just thinking now, like a month into the school year, we should probably maybe hold a community forum and evaluate, how did this school year get started? We have hundreds of new families, we have, uh, new principals and, uh, new programs, new curriculum. I would love to hear feedback from anyone that's willing to give it. Uh, how did that all roll out? What, what went well? What could be better? And to me, that's how we stay in touch with the, the owners and find ways that we can improve, uh, the things that worked well, that's keep doing, the things that were a struggle. Um, I'll give one example, as in the past, there's been a shuffle, I've heard it called over and over again, two weeks into the school year, uh, students, teachers even, classes are shuffled from schools. And that, that was a frustration of mine as a community member for a couple of years, happened to my own children, uh, that two weeks after school starts, we then move, uh, large groups of students from, uh, school to school and even teachers that even to a different grade. To me, that's something that I'm hoping is improving, but I'd love to hear feedback a month after school starts to make sure that that's not happening on a large scale, uh, those types of things. So the community forum to me is, uh, is a wonderful way to be in touch face-to-face with people and hear their concerns, hear what's going well. Uh, we get positive feedback and negative feedback and that's, it's important to hear both.
So we, um, we talked about setting a quarterly community forum. Ms. Whitney sent at least the board dates, I'm not sure if they've been posted on the website yet, but we, we have, um, for the next year, four community forums planned and we'll get those dates posted for the public. Uh, I believe the first one's in October, so that's a good point. We're, we're a learning organization striving for continuous improvement. And so maybe the first community forum we have is, you know, a month into school, a month and a half into school, we invite the public to come and, and help us continue to be a, you know, learning orgis- learning organization that strives for continuous improvement and let us know what went wrong, let us know what went right, kind of a lessons learned beginning of the year, uh, um, feedback from the community. So we'll, we'll talk about that too. Thank you.
We were going to have a bond forum this summer, what happened with that?
We, um, are currently looking at what our communication strategy for our informational delivery will be for, um, for that. So we'll get back to the board with a, with a cohesive, just a comprehensive recommendation for what that'll look like. It's partially connected to the work that Strategy 360 is doing in helping us identify what are the best ways to communicate with our community. You know, is it really going out for that particular kind of information sharing or are there some more efficient ways that our community would appreciate more? So, um, Strategy 360 will do, be doing some polling of our community and once we get that back, then we'll know what is the best strategies for information sharing that our community would appreciate. So we should be, that should be getting wrapped up and we'll be able to get that moving forward.
Go ahead.
I, it's just that the bond is coming through in February, so I, anyway, just so when, when will we get that information? It's quite timely, we, we need it and so when will that come? When will you-
I believe there was a phone call that occurred today that will, was kind of the phone call that needed to happen and then we'll be able to launch the polling, so fairly quickly. I mean, they're, they're ready to, to do the polling and get that turned around with, I would say, within a couple of weeks.
What's the name of this organization?
Strategy 360.
Strategy 360. Do they feel like we're behind?
No.
All right. Thanks. I guess maybe I should ask, do they know what they're doing?
Yes.
All right, thanks.
No, they've been great and it's part of a broader communications audit in us refreshing the way that we're communicating with our constituents. You know, I think that's part of what, as again, a, a learning organization, but also an organization that exists in a technologically advanced, um, kind of time, that, you know, the way that maybe organizations have communicated in the past is no longer the way people are appreciating information. So, um, we need to make sure that whatever strategies we're using for whatever purpose, whether it's sharing information around the bond or sharing information about a new app or sharing information about, you know, new school programs, new curriculum materials, that we're communicating with our constituency in a way that works for them. Um, you know, there are only certain people that are going to come to a community forum that have the flexibility to do that, that, or, or have the confidence enough to stand up in front of a group of people. So how do you engage the community members that that forum is never going to be comfortable for them? Their voices are equally as important as the folks that, that that is comfortable for them. I know for a fact that my parents would have never come to a community forum. Um, they, they just wouldn't have, they wouldn't have had the confidence to stand up behind a microphone in front of a group of people that don't know them and they don't know and articulate their viewpoint. And I know my, you know, my parents are not alone in that. So, and we have a responsibility to make sure that we're engaging all of our community. Um, so that's what we're hoping that this broad-based community, this communications audit will help us in, how do we make sure that we're hearing voices from all of our constituencies and make sure that we're making good decisions on behalf of, of all of our owners.
And what, so far we've heard what the five of us feel will serve the needs of our community. I, I would love to hear what the community feels will serve the needs of our community. If we find out what the community feels will serve the needs of our community and they come back and say, we don't feel like this is, we feel like this will, do we have enough time to change what's on the bond?
Yes.
Okay.
The short answer is yes.
Okay, thanks.
I mean, to a point, we'll, you know, we'll need to start making those decisions fairly quickly, but-
Okay, and we'll know that fairly quickly?
Yes.
Yes.
I like having a date.
I know.
If you can get that, I'll get you dates.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yes.
All right, thank you. I, I think, uh, like the rest of the board said, this last one here, that we're in touch with our owners or community, we all believe it's important. We all recognize we've made some nice strides in, in the recent past here, but there's still a lot of work to do and, you know, stuff like community forums, stuff like the communications audit that'll help us with surveys, help us with our web communication, help us with our social media communication, all that's exciting and, um, we'll continue to improve our communication with the owners. So thank you for attending our study session, uh, this afternoon and for those of you who stick around, we'll see you at the board meeting at 6:30.